Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 42. Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Allegheny Crane Rental in the Amount of $88,150 for Emergency Work at Penn Avenue and 10th Street. Bill Number 43. Resolution Granting unto AT&amp;T their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense six antennas to the facade of the building at 240 Fourth Avenue in the First Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 44. Resolution Granting unto Gartley Group LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an entrance ramp at 4736 Liberty Ave., 8th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 45. Resolution Granting unto the University of Pittsburgh their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a stormwater runoff mitigation rain garden at 3550 Terrace Street, 4th Ward, 8th Council District. Bill Number 46. Resolution Granting unto Carnegie Mellon University, CDFD their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a retaining wall along Fillmore Street and Forbes Avenue and a tree pit at 4665 Forbes Avenue in the 4th Ward, 8th Council District. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 47. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a Cooperation and License Agreement with the URA of Pittsburgh to authorize the inclusion of designated city properties in the Land Care Program and to further authorize reimbursement payments for the services of the URA and its contractors. Councilman Bruce A. Cross presents Bill Number 48. Resolution Amending Resolution 151 of 2019 which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into professional services agreements and/or contracts with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service and MPO ETC required assessment and evaluation of public safety candidates by increasing the total not to exceed $160,000 to cover services in 2020. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 49. Resolution Providing for an Agreement for Payment of the City's Share of the 2020 Operating Expenses to the Allegheny County Central Tax Collection District for Tax Collection Cost Not to Exceed $8,930.81. Councilman Corio Connor presents Bill Number 50. Resolution Amending Resolution 849 of 2019 authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended professional services agreement with End Time Solutions, Inc. for EMS and police scheduling and timekeeping services Cost Not to Exceed $863,525. Bill Number 51. Resolution Amending Resolution 50 of 2018 entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement with Cover Your Assets LLC for a web-based secondary employment scheduling system and services by extending the term of the agreement in order for the pending RFP process to be completed. Bill Number 52. Resolution Authorizing the Citizens Police Review Board to enter into an agreement or contract with Anthony William, Attorney of Rothman Gordon for professional services to assist in the legal representation of the Citizens Police Review Board for a period of three years. Said agreements shall not exceed $45,000 per year for 2020, 2021, and 2022, subject to the annual allocation by City Council. Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill Number 41. Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018 effective January 1, 2019 as amended entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by amending various City Council CDBG unspecified local option line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehab of neighborhood facilities. This bill is sponsored by Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Kraus, and Council President Teresa Cal Smith. Bill Number 53. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with agencies to provide rapid rehousing activities including rental assistance and housing relocation and stabilization services as associated with emergency solution grant funds Cost Not to Exceed $240,625. And Council President Teresa Cal Smith presents Bill Number 40. Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017 effective December 28, 2017 as amended entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by making an amendment and name change to City Council line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities. This bill is sponsored by Councilperson Teresa Cal Smith. And Bill Number 54. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget submitting acting pay approvals for Michael Knight and on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Justin All, Tom Samstag, Paul Abel, Rob Jacobs, Mike Schmidt, and Robert Jacobs per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018. That concludes the reading of the legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Cal Smith, President, six members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And during the moment of silence, please keep your thoughts and prayers to the former Public Safety Director Glenn Cannon, who passed away this week. We offer our condolences to his family from City Council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, our next order of business is proclamation. We have one to be read into the record from Councilman Kraus. Is Councilman Kraus here?
Who do I do? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam President. Yes, these are both to be read into the record, please.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Good morning.
Mr. Kraus presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, January 20th, 2020 to be rainy days here salon day in the City of Pittsburgh. Mr. Kraus also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, January 20th, 2020 to be Arlington Civic Council Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
I should approve.
Second. Oh, in favor? Those opposed? Proclamation's passed. Now we'll move on to the next order of business, which is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize. And when the red light comes on, your time is up. Will the first speaker please come to the podium? Good morning.
Good morning, all. Should I push the green button? Oh, you're okay. I'm ready. Okay. I'm Georgette Russell. I don't see it moving. Oh, I'm Georgette Russell. I'm a, I'm black and I'm from Pittsburgh, born and raised. My family has been in Pittsburgh or in the region for at least seven generations. I'm here representing American Descendants of Slavery. It's a group advocating nationally for a federal reparations program specifically for persons enslaved here in the United States. We're also advocating nationally for a Black Agenda and also proud defenders of our Civil Rights Acts. The reason why I'm here, number one, is because Black Pittsburgh is living in degradation. Where Pittsburgh is largely a city of blacks and whites. The average, medium household income by race for white Pittsburgers is $51,000. The average income for Black Pittsburgh is $26,000. On average, white Pittsburgh makes $1,000 more than Black Pittsburgh. Number one, the City Council meetings need to be moved to evenings. Black Pittsburghers cannot make it to this meeting and advocate for their conditions. Pittsburgh is the most livable city, supposedly. It's, so if you're making more than, if average white Pittsburgher makes $1,000 more than Black Pittsburgh, then, then you have more than enough. And then you have Black Pittsburgh living in complete degradation and also dejection. When you look at the, the, and medium income, Asians and Latinos who are very negligible in, 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 in their amounts here with regards to their population, they, they make more in terms of household income than Black Pittsburgh. This is by design. This is 40 years in the making. I'm holding you all accountable for this, each and every one of you, including the Mayor Paduto. We have a Gender and Equity Commission. It pointed out some symptoms, mortality rates, education, income. There's a lack of wealth and the, the, the study did not point out wealth disparities. There was no mention of wealth disparities. So the point of matter is Black Pittsburgh doesn't do business with Black Pittsburgh. There's no economic inclusion with regards to Black Pittsburgh, specifically. So we need policy, this needs to be addressed. Black Pittsburghers are moving out. And now with regards to what the mayor has done, he's appointed people to come in, Black people to come in to the city to provide solutions, but a lot of these people don't, aren't Pittsburghers. They come from other places. So even the people that he appointed on his commission aren't Black Pittsburghers. That's a problem. Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Marjorie Tab. I am from District 9 and I'm also here representing American Descendants of Slavery. I just want to reiterate that, yeah, I'm not sure about the history of the timing of these meetings, but 10 o'clock in the morning is really not ideal for a lot of working people, including, you know, especially for the Black population in the city. So I wanted to address that and hope to get these meetings changed, at least have an evening session or something like that. But I did want to come and address the racial disparities in this city. It's a disgrace. It's a crisis. Everybody should be ashamed of it. The Cleveland Federal Reserve put out information that the Black population, the racial wage gap in this city is 62%. 62%. And I'm trying to find out now, how do we reconcile that? Because it's, it's, it's off the charts. We, in, in their list of cities, of comparable cities in this country, we were number one with the highest wage, racial wage gap. And I'm trying to understand why this isn't a priority, why this isn't a crisis to the city, why it isn't a sense of urgency to, to, to fix that. At this point, I am asking my peers to leave the city because I don't see anything happening with that. I'm, I'm, I'm here, a lot of us cannot afford to leave the city. So where, where do we stand? And how is that going to be addressed? But, you know, as far as these new people being brought in to about affordable housing and such, why do we need more affordable housing? We wouldn't need affordable housing if the racial wage gap was fixed. So why can't we fix that? The housing can come secondary, but these, the, the companies here, the corporations, the city need to start making that a priority to fix this wage gap. We won't make it. We won't survive, not here.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Oakland and Squirrel Hill. Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2020. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Pittsburgh population 1,900, 321,000, 1950, 650,000, and 2018, 306,000. Where's the rat? This is the year of the rat for Chinese. A concern of council is the adequate flow of information with average intelligence, like the off-time clock here, that are $90,000 a year clerk pre, fixed naught, furnished no reason for a month in 2019. This is backward moving, it's dark time, brain minus, slow motion, social neurotic fusion. A global intelligence society concern is to offer the best intelligence using the information with the least bias. We want forward motion, rainbow light, brains at work, faster motion, a social neural fusion. So GIS triple verified transmission, brain bit is this. The 6th January 2020 Pittsburgh City Council Meeting Inauguration Ceremony Program promised remarks by Mr. Paduto but produced no Paduto remarks. Where was he? Was there something more important than the IC for new council? I emailed Mr. Paduto on the 8th and asked him to respond to these kinds of questions. Was he sick? Sloppy preparation? Was he afraid of facing some of the council members, including Mr. Kraus, Ms. Gross? No response. This information value from him is zero. The intelligence availability, I think, is also zero. Another bit, in the 150 years since the passage of amendments 13, 14, and 15 in the US Constitution to eliminate the institutionalized political racism embedded in that non-sacred Constitution made by white males, the Democratic Party, which dominates the politics of Pittsburgh, has done nothing, nothing to elect a Black African-American to the office of mayor. The Montana State Capitol Helena, which is a city with greater than 85% white people in it, has Wilmont Collins as mayor, a naturalized Black Liberian American immigrant.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Evan Shepherd. I am also an American descendant of slavery. I'm just, I'm just going to kind of reiterate everything that the two women who came before me said. I'm not going to reiterate it, but I would like to emphasize what they said and add on. We all know, the studies have been coming out, we've just been doing studies, things are terrible for Black Pittsburghers, people are moving out, income is terrible. I think we all know the history of the city. We are not innocent and, you know, the City Council's not been innocent in the condition of Black Pittsburghers. We know what happened with the building of Civic Arena, people getting moved out. It's happening again as far as, you know, we're trying to attract Google, we're trying to attack, attract tech companies, we're moving Black people out. We don't care what happens to them. We don't care about their conditions. You know, I'm, I'm not going to reiterate all the numbers that people who came before me said, but I just want to say, people are waking up, okay? I just want to, you know, we're the first, I guess, wave, but people are waking up. People are, are not settling for studies anymore. People are not, people are going to get politically active. So I think if you guys, you know, or, you know, you guys have political acumen, this is your chance to get out ahead of it now and do something and, and do the right thing and do right by Black Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. How's everyone today? My name is John Mitchell. I'm a proud member of ADOS, which stands for American Descendants of Slavery. I'm here today to introduce us as a group, as an organization, as a movement. Our numbers are small in the City of Pittsburgh. We only have about 100 members, but we're growing nationwide. We have chapters in cities all over the country, Detroit, Chicago, wow, California, LA, just we're growing expeditiously, fast. We need to be heard. We need to be taken seriously. ADOS is a movement, a political movement, that is for Black people, but we aren't against any group of people. We want and we welcome allies of every race. We welcome the LGBTQ community. We welcome anybody and everybody that believes in reparations and tangibles for the descendants of slavery in this country. America's wealth has been built off the free labor of our backs. You can do the homework. It's not hard. All the information that you would need to find is on ados101.com. We have a Black Agenda. We have different implementations that are in process now, such as Project Takeover, a down-ballot vote, which you should be very aware of. We are coming. Please, let's sit at the table. Let's talk. Let's talk about how we can get Black Pittsburgh out of the slums that we find ourselves in. We are the workers of this city and we need your help. We're dying. We're dying in our streets. I'm from Homewood. We're dying in our streets and occupied territories and war zones, literally. PTSD needs to be addressed because our babies are afraid to come outside. Does that mean anything to you? Does that matter? Do we matter? The racial wealth gap in this country as a whole, we have 2%. Caucasians have 90%. By the year 2053, ADOS in this country will be at 0%. We're dying financially, physically, spiritually. We need help. Please.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Well, here we go again. This is Les Ludwig from Squirrel Hill. And you'll say, this guy keeps coming back here. Doesn't really say anything different. I'm sure that most of you watched the debates. Did you notice that with all these people, with all of their problems and all of our own problems, nobody got up and said, here is where the money is that we can change everything, everything that these people are suffering through? I was at 1707 Bedford Avenue from '60 to '75. I saw what was going on, people stealing wages below a dollar an hour. I insisted when my father-in-law came to me and said, why are you paying a dollar an hour? And I said, Dad, our raw material base is interstate. And the law says if you're interstate, the minimum wage is a dollar an hour. He kept quiet and walked away. I wasn't willing to steal labor, even though a dollar wasn't really enough. So these people represent, for me, for someone who's lived on both sides of it, who's had 13 women breaking eggs commercially, and what can I say in summation? You're going to pay a price. Watch what's happening, the amount of violence, the amount of shootings and so on. That's speaking to us and saying, change. Give answers to these people. They deserve it. They're human beings. They're not Black people. They're human beings. And we have to start acknowledging it and living up to it. And we haven't been, and I've been standing here talking about it for how many years? It's a disgrace. It's a disgrace.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig.
What are you going to do about it? Wake up, America.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig.
Or you're going to pay a terrible price.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentations of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Coghill. Thank you, Mr. Coghill.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number Seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Duquesne Light Company to provide, one, a permanent construction easement for the improvement of the Reoxia Power Substation in the central Oakland neighborhood, and, two, a license to maintain a swath of land in the base of the hill to improve long-term storm-water control of the city property, which also affects the substation. Bill Number Forty-two, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Allegheny Crane Rental in the Amount of Eighty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for Emergency Work at Penn Avenue and Tenth Street. Bill Number Forty-three, Resolution Granting unto AT&amp;T. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense six antennas to the facade of the building at two forty Fourth Avenue in the first ward, Sixth Council District. Bill Number Forty-four, Resolution Granting unto Gartley Group LLC. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an entrance ramp at forty-seven thirty-six Liberty Avenue, Eighth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number Forty-five, Resolution Granting unto the University of Pittsburgh. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a storm-water runoff mitigation rain garden at thirty-five fifty Terrence Street, Fourth Ward, Eighth Council District. Bill Number Forty-six, Resolution Granting unto Carnegie Mellon University. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a retaining wall along Fillmore Street and Forts Avenue and a tree pit at forty-six sixty-five Forts Avenue in the fourth ward, Eighth Council District. Bill Number Fifty-seven, Ordinance, Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title Two, Fiscal Article Five Special Funds, the City of Pittsburgh Park Trust Fund to Conform with the Home Rule Charter, Article Nine, in Order to Establish the Creation of the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund.
Madam President, just a quick point of order. May I please be added as a cosponsor to Bill Fifty-seven, please, and join Councilmembers Coghill and Gross?
Yes. Councilman Coghill, you have a motion for to waive rule.
I don't have a motion to waive rule.
Eight on Bill Forty-four, it says.
Oh.
Do you want to have it once more?
No, I don't think so. Do you?
This one?
Oh, that one.
It's a handicap.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yes, motion to waive rule eight on?
Bill Forty-four.
Bill Forty-four.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
For those opposed, abstentions, it will be moved to the agenda tomorrow. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President. Do I have papers?
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Madam President. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Clark. Thank you.
There is one here, but I don't see it. Did you take it? Madam President, I lost my paper, but now I found it.
Okay, we'll take it after we.
Thank you. It's, it's okay. Yeah. We'll take hers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Forty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation and license agreement with the URA of Pittsburgh to authorize the inclusion of designated city properties in the Land Care Program and to further authorize reimbursement payments for the services of the URA and its contractors.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, and thank you, Madam Clark. And now can we have Councilman Kraus?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, Madam Clark.
Thank you. Thank you twice today.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number Forty-eight, Resolution Amending Resolution One Fifty-One, which authorizes the city to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service and MPEOETC required assessment and evaluation of public safety candidates by increasing the total not to exceed amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to cover services in 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Chairman, or Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman.
I'm not used to the name of the bill. I'm completely confused.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Forty-nine, Resolution Providing for an Agreement for Payment of the City's Share of the Twenty Twenty Operating Expenses to the Allegheny County Central Tax Collection District for Tax Collection Cost Not to Exceed Eight Thousand Nine Hundred Thirty Dollars and Eighty-One Cent.
Thank you. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman O'Connor.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number Fifty, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Eight Forty-nine, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with Endtime Solutions, Inc., for EMS and police scheduling and timekeeping services at a cost not to exceed eight hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and is amending in order to correct JDE job numbers. Bill Number Fifty-one, Resolution Amending Resolution Fifty, which authorizes the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Cover Your Assets LLC by extending the term of the agreement in order for the pending RFP process to be completed. Bill Number Fifty-two, Resolution Authorizing the Citizen Police Review Board to Enter into an Agreement with Attorney William F. Ward of Rothman Gordon, PC, for Professional Services to Assist in the Legal Representation of the Citizen Police Review Board for a Period of Three Years. Said Agreement shall not exceed forty-five thousand dollars per year for twenty, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, subject to the annual allocation by City Council.
Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Forty-one, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Sixty-three, Entitled Adopting and Approving the Twenty-Nineteen Capital Budget, the Twenty-Nineteen CDBG, and the Twenty-Nineteen Twenty Through Twenty Twenty-Four Capital Improvement Program by Amending Various City Council's CDBG, unspecified local option line items, and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement for Operation, Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the residents of the city. Bill Number Fifty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Agencies to Provide Rapid Rehousing Activities, Including Rental Assistant and Housing Relocation and Stabilization Services as Associated with Emergency Solution Grant Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed Two Hundred Forty Thousand Six Hundred and Twenty-five Dollars.
Thank you. And I have a communications for acting pay approval.
Council President Smith presents Bill Number Forty, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Ninety-seven, Amending and Adopting the Twenty Eighteen, I'm sorry, Bill Number Fifty-four. Sorry. Correction. Bill Number Fifty-four, Communication from Kevin Polis, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals for Michael Knight on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Justin All, Tom Samstag, Paul Abel, Rob Jacobs, Mike Schmidt, and Robert Jacobs, Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June of Twenty Eighteen. Bill Number Fifty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Creation of a Parks Tax Task Force.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
Do we, I think we?
Did I miss forty?
You did, Madam Clark.
We need to vote for it.
We're going to read, receive, and file this. I did miss forty. I thought.
Can we have a motion to read, receive, and file for bill?
I've got one more.
I have one more.
Bill Number Forty, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Seventy-nine, Seven Ninety-seven. As amended, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Eighteen Capital Budget, Twenty Eighteen CDBG Grant Program, and the Twenty Eighteen through Twenty Twenty-Three Capital Improvement Program by Making an Amendment and Name Change to City Council Line Items and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement for Operation, Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the residents of the city of Pittsburgh.
Now, can we have a motion to read, receive, and file for the Bill Number Fifty-four?
A motion to read, receive, file on Bill Fifty-four.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Now, we'll move on to the next order of business, which is final action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. That clerk is up and down today.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Thirty-nine, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for January Fifteen, Twenty Twenty, With an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number Twenty-six, Resolution Realigning a Total of Eight Thousand One Hundred and Seven, Eight Million One Hundred and Seven Thousand Dollars Between Various Accounts Within the Twenty Nineteen Operating Budget. This Transfer is Necessary for the Twenty Nineteen Close to Meet Final Expenditures for Fiscal Year Twenty Nineteen.
Thank you. You've heard the reading entitled bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? On the bill? Seeing no discussion, well, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote nay. Will the clerk please call the room?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes has finally passed. Now, we'll move on to motions and resolutions. Do we have anything from the members? Councilman Kraus?
Thank you, Madam Clark. I, uh, Madam President, thank you.
Maybe you know I'd rather be sitting.
I was just saying to Councilman Lavelle, I'm completely confused because everything has been sort of switched around. It's going to take us all a minute to catch on. But Madam President and Madam Clerk, I just have a quick question on Bill Forty-one under our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Councilwoman Gross and I had a brief sidebar on community development. Block grant dollars are now under the Office of Management and Budget, and is it possible that that bill needs to be in the Committee of Finance and Law? I'm just questioning that. If you wouldn't mind, Madam Clerk, looking into that. And somehow I became a sponsor of the bill, and I'm not sure how I became a sponsor of the bill. If, and you don't have to tell me now. If you just, if you wouldn't mind, please, just research that so that I, I understand how I became a sponsor. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
Yes. I just wanted to take a minute and speak to the Parks Tax Initiative we turned in this morning. First and foremost, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross. She has been a very valuable partner to me in forming this and creating it. I leaned on her experience and everything she brought to the table. And I want to say, we worked very hard at this. We've been meeting for six weeks, I want to say probably a dozen meetings, countless conversations. I, we now put this on the table. I look forward to meeting with our other council members and hearing their concerns and adjusting, amending, doing what we have to do. But I felt, most importantly, and I think Councilwoman Gross felt the same as I do, and I hope we all feel this way, that the most important thing is these taxpayer dollars stay in the taxpayers' hands. This bill does that. We've, I'm not going to say we thought of everything. There's actually things that Councilwoman Gross and I still disagree on about this bill, but we will air that out. And I look forward, I'm going to be reaching out to the other council members to run this by you and see what your concerns are, if there are any. And I hope that everybody will sign on in the end to it because I think it covers everything. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to, do any other members speak to that? So, I'm just going to add to that, Councilman. I know that you've worked very hard. I think from the very beginning, day one, I was the first person to question the park tax, and you were second. And then right after that, the rest, everybody else started questioning some things. So, I absolutely share your concerns. What I don't share is the way we're going about it, and I think that we'll work together with our task force and with you, with your legislation, and hopefully, hopefully, we'll draft something that the administration can support, that we can all support, that, most importantly, our residents can support. And I think, above all, we need to make sure council remains in control of those dollars. If it were up to me, to be honest with you, I wouldn't even collect the tax. It was just me and my vote. I wouldn't even collect it. I'd form the account and not even collect it. But I think because we are at this point and our residents voted, I think we have to do what they've asked us to do. But I think we need to make sure that the dollars are spent wisely and that there's a lot of accountability with those dollars. And so, we'll have that discussion next week when the bills come up. But we are, we did form the task force. They will be working with the administration. If you change your mind and you decide that you want to serve on that, we'd be happy to have you on.
May I, Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So, as I understand Bill Fifty-seven, it's procedural in nature that we are required to form the Parks, Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund in order to be able to collect the tax.
It's not just procedural. There's other things in the bill, including dividing it by nine council districts and some other things that are questionable. So, I think that remains for the conversation next week. But I will say that that's, that was my concern and Councilman Coghill and I talked about. And he's worked tirelessly on this, and he put his whole heart and soul into this, and I know that he wants to see the right thing done with this funding, as do all of us. We just may have, we may all disagree about how we get there.
If I may.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. So, as I read the bill, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it is to, it is to fulfill our obligation to establish the creation of the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund, which is just to collect the park tax. We are obligated to do that by law. That's my understanding. We'll have further conversation about that. And then I do have a question about the formation of the Parks Tax Task Force. Have members been announced? I'm a little confused.
Yes. So, we just put that together today. We were talking over the weekend that we were going to put something together. Councilman Burgess, Councilman Lavelle, and myself met with the administration, and we said this is what the direction we wanted to go because we wanted to make sure other council members had their voice on a task force and so that we could work together with the administration. So, what we're going to do is, Councilman Burgess, Councilman Lavelle, Councilwoman Gross will serve on the task force, and I have room for one more. So.
Yeah, I just want to make the argument.
Wait, wait, wait. Councilman, Councilman Kraus has a floor.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little confused how all members' voices are heard if only certain members are meeting.
Because they're going to come back and we're going to have meetings, just like we have when you formed task force in the past. It would come back, we have reports. We work on the legislation, we work on whatever the concerns are. But we're going to make sure we're all working together, and we tried to get some representation across the area. And so, I, so we'll see. It would differ opinions we try to bring to the table. So, I think we'll see what they come up with, and then we'll, we'll all be working with the administration on it, on the final plans.
Well, I've had, yeah. But I, I just really want to stress that ultimately, every vote counts and every vote matters, and whatever is determined in the formation and/or distribu- distribution of the funds is going to take majority of members of councils' votes. And I just want to caution that it's extremely important that every member has an equal voice and an equal opportunity in, in those decisions as they're made.
Absolutely. We already talked about that. So, I mean, we already said, how can we make sure that all members and different opinions are at the table? And so, first, we'll bring the task force together, draft a plan, possibly incorporate what Councilman Coghill put together, possibly some of it. We'll see what that, what that comes up with. But then, bring that back to council and have some briefings with council so that we can get, make sure we're getting input from all. Councilman Burgess, and then Councilman Coghill, you have second round.
This is my first time hearing about dividing the money into nine equal districts. That's an interesting idea. Certainly, it runs counter to the narrative of part, of doing the tax in the first place, which is of equity. That would eliminate equity because we are a stratified, segregated city, and most of our council people live in segregated communities, and they represent segregated communities. And so, if you divide it up into nine equal shares, you will absolutely make it not equitable. It will be It will be inequitable, it will be inequitable distribution. I'm sure that, I'm assuming that that's purposeful, that that is intentional, that is wrong, it is against the spirit of the tax, it is, it is inequitable, it, it, it is, it represents the worst things of our city, that we have promised a tax for, the campaign was, was based on building parks in communities of color and communities of low income. And to take that, those dollars, and to redistribute them so that middle-class and wealthy communities get a fair, not fair, but get an equal distribution of those resources is absolutely against the spirit of the tax, and I'll stand every day to oppose that. And I mean, this is not the time for that conversation. I wasn't going to have it now, but I'm, I'm going to have it at all times. I am. So my position is really very clear. I've said from the beginning that the money should go primarily to the city. I will, I'm willing to listen. Last time I checked, in my years of council, I've never not listened to a member of council when they come and ask me for my help. Last time I checked, since I've been a member of council, I've never spread rumors or said nasty things about people. Whatever I've done, I've done in public. And so I, I, I stand to say that if we're going to have task force, every member, as always, of council gets to participate. When we were Finance Chair, every member's concerns was listened to. And so because we have select members of council who have experience to work out with the administration, it does not mean that every member's voice is not heard and everyone doesn't count. I'm, I stand against that. I stand against those, those divisive voices who, who have their own agenda. This is the city's agenda. We have to look beyond our personal attentions and our personal concerns and do what's best for the entire city. That is certainly my intentions and my direction.
Thank you. I think that we'll have this discussion next week. So, is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman.
Just briefly, so perhaps I, I should have, should have thought through my wishing to, to join the bill at this point in time. I truly believed it was procedural in nature and that we were, it was about forming the, the Parks Trust Fund that we are required to do procedurally. So at this point in time, allow me to hold off until I have time to speak with Members Gross and Coghill before we, I take that any further. And then just, I have to agree at this stage of things with the comments that Councilman Burgess is making, that my understanding, and I will fight for this, is, is the funds coming in will be distributed through a capital budget project, and that much of the arguments that were made in the process of establishing a voting base for the parking ta, or the parks tax was to balance and provide equitable resources across the board, and, and even the Parks Conservancy will make that argument, that they clearly listed that things that were clearly underfunded for decades that really needed to be a priority. And so I would concur with those, those comments and the importance of equitable distribution through a capital budget process.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill.
I would just make the argument that the task force in our legislation is city council, not four members, not five members. The argument is, the task force are the nine, the governing body is city council, and that's the way I feel it should be. As far as the nine subaccounts, everything's open to interpretation in this. We wanted to get something on the floor to start the conversation. If members have a problem with it, we can amend, we can adjust. I'm the one that personally fought for the nine equal subaccounts, and then for each council person, they can do equitably into their own parks. You know, my district voted heavily against this, and anything less, I will put repairs in my district and parks needs against anybody's district, okay? It's been neglected for a long time. I have immediate repairs that need done. I'm ready to start doing those repairs. So that's why we want to put this on the table. We'll get everybody's thoughts on it, everybody's views on it. We'll adjust it how we can. I just ask for cooperation and a chance to talk to you all about it.
And then I'm going to concur with Councilman Coghill's remarks as well, too. I believe the task force is the nine members of council. That's, that's the position I would take as well.
So now that I'm going to speak, any other members want to speak on this? So I'm just going to say, there's a difference between the task force and the nine members overseeing the funds. The task force is to determine how it was restructured, whether there will be city council members that have the complete oversight, which is what I've been advocating for, which is why you included it in your plan, and that's what I want to see happen, is the council has oversight of tax dollars, no one else. And I think that the task force is just to create that, that idea of how the money will be dispersed and to work with the administration on what the process will be for nonprofits and others to even apply for the funding. We don't, I, I think that what people need to understand is council wants to send a clear message that even though this was advocated for by one organization, that does not mean that one organization is going to get every dollar, even one dime, unless this council as a body approves it. And so that's, that's my only, that's my concern. I want to make sure in the end, I don't care, we can, we can bicker over, back and forth over the task force, over the legislation, over distribution. In the end, I want to make sure council has control of those dollars. The public elected us to control the money, not a nonprofit that has really, in my opinion, the way that campaign played out, I felt exploited a lot of our communities to make sure that they came out to vote in favor of it, and I didn't like it from the day one. I felt like there was a lot of deceit, deceiving information, to my opinion, the way, the way it was being distributed. And that may not be, you know, with the way they feel, but I felt like even hearing the park numbers and the parks that needed to have repair, I had questioned. So at the bottom line for me, at the end, I want to make sure we, the people elected to represent the people, are making sure the people have a voice on how their dollars will be spent, not some other outside organization. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
One last thing for me. Just a brief correction. I was wrong. When we amended our rules, actually, I'm being informed by our Budget Office that we did place community development block grant dollars under the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development, and so that bill is properly placed.
I believe that you read that, but I differ.
Okay. All right. I think we're correct.
Thank you.
I'll take your advice. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.[1742.11]